All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started with the city council meeting. It is 7:21. And we're gonna go ahead and start with roll call.
Thank you. Mayor LaBarre?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Case?
Here.
Councilmember Connors?
Here.
Councilmember Nikai?
Here.
Councilmember Neal?
Here.
Councilmember Ott?
Here.
Councilmember Zuluaga?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, this evening, we are already, already at item number five A. And got approval of minutes? And?
Yes.
Yep, those are gonna be separate, so. Counsel, any questions on five A?
I'll make a motion to approve minutes from September 16.
I'll second it.
Does Robert get a vote?
We're just, just.
I gotta log out and then log in.
We just need one second, please.
We had voted that we're not gonna let you vote if you're not logged in.
I was logged in, but didn't, didn't show up under system.
You got it now?
Not yet.
I think she's way.
Just give me one second.
I didn't get a vote, though, so you're gonna. My vote's yes.
None of us have voted. Yeah, no one's voted yet. Well, what's your word?
We, we would just like you to be a little more professional.
Voter over there.
Okay, counsel, you may vote, please.
For the record, I have voted.
You have. Thank you, counsel. Motion is passed unanimously.
Thank you. All right, off to item five B, council endorsement of DOLA planning grant, and we have Grace presenting for us.
Yeah. So if I, I may just very briefly, and I'll turn it over to Grace. We, we're just looking for simple council endorsement of an application tonight for a grant. If, if we are successful in the grant, we'll come and talk to you a lot more about it in the process, but for now, it's just an application. Nothing's been awarded yet. Nothing's been committed, so I just wanted to give that preface. So with that, I'll turn it over to Grace.
Thank you. Good evening, counsel. This was in, as a staff report in your packet, but we wanted to provide a little bit more context with this. So as Michael said, we're looking for endorsement for the DOLA planning grant. Next slide, Sarah. So that is the Innovative Housing Planning Grant Program, AKA IHOP. Insert pancake joke here.
We didn't name it.
We didn't, we didn't pick that name. And this is through DOLA, so the Colorado Department of Local Affairs. It's, awards are expected to be approximately, for individual awards, fifty thousand to two hundred thousand. We are requesting eighty-five thousand as part of this grant program, and it does require a twenty-five percent match. So we would be getting sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars from DOLA with a twenty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollar match. And we would use the ARPA funds for that match, because we are allowed to use those for matching. Will be notified of award by the end of October, hopefully sooner, and then we have to expend those funds by June thirtieth of 2024. And the idea is that the funds will be used to procure a consultant to perform a housing needs assessment. A housing needs assessment analyzes current and future housing needs in a community, identifies housing challenges and opportunities, and provides data to assist in strategy development. So it, it really just provides us with situational awareness. We, we know anecdotal, anecdotally that we have some housing issues in our community. This just helps us to identify those challenges and opportunities and get actual data that we can eventually use to perhaps inform a housing strategy in our community. And they, these usually, these typically include a demographic analysis, so population, economic profiles, housing supply, so unit types, trends, vacancy analysis, building permanent analysis, rental housing analysis, all of that good stuff. Housing affordability, so price trends, gaps in inventory and demand, projected affordability, current affordability by unit type, et cetera. And then it also usually includes recommendations, so whoever performs that needs assessment typically provides recommendations for action. And that can just be best practices in peer communities, short and long-term actions and strategies, and expected outcomes relative to needs. Well, mixed up. So why conduct it? Well, this is one of the actual goals identified in the 2030 comprehensive plan. So we have demonstrated community support for it. It's, if anyone's wondering, it's one-one-six in, under goal number one in chapter three of the comprehensive plan. And the la, we did, actually, we part, we partake, partook in a, in a housing needs assessment with Teller County, Triple Creek Victor in 2016, and so it was finalized in 2016. Most of the work was in 2015. We do recognize the need for an updated housing needs assessment. A lot has changed since then. You just all had a conversation about short-term rentals. That's definitely an impact to consider with our housing needs, and it's, a lot, just a lot has changed in the last six years, so. And then also, earlier at the council retreat, it was identified as a priority area. So the next steps is if we get the award, we will post an RFP to procure a consultant. And as part of the application, we actually said we would do that within three weeks of notification of award. And then after a housing needs assessment is completed, we would likely analyze all of that, talk about that, talk to you about it, and then potentially, the likely next step, step would be to begin the process of developing a housing strategy. So what we are looking for from you is endorsement for the city's application of the DOLA planning grant program to fund an updated housing needs assessment. Does anyone have questions?
Counsel, questions?
Michael, how much, I mean, we've got quite a bit of cap on the ARPA dollars left.
We will be talking about that as part of the budget process. There, there is sufficient funds to cover this. We have other projects in that that would not quite deplete that for 2023, but there is room to cover this, and then there would be a little bit more after the 2023 budget.
Why?
Was drafted.
Why wouldn't we be able to see what it, it's competing against so that we could prioritize spending the money on this versus may not have money to spend on something else? Do you, do you have another example of what might be a competing ARPA expenditure?
The ARPA funds are very flexible and fungible. They can fund just about anything. We have funded a number of capital projects. We're planning on funding several more capital projects. And for the grant, for broader context on the ARPA funds, we, over the two tranches, there's one point nine million dollars the city received in those funds. So there's, we've, this is a very small portion of that.
You're saying that's approximately what's left, one point something?
No, that was the total allocation that, from, from the feds over 2021 and 2022.
Part what is left.
Oh, what is left? Right now, I think we're standing in about still just over seven hundred thousand dollars.
All right, that gives me an order of magnitude. Thank you.
Counsel, anything else? Robert?
Thanks. So Grace, um, have you seen one of these reports published by some other community?
Yeah, um, so this is, we're actually applying for the last round of this funding, so there have been two other rounds of it, so many, many municipalities in Colorado have applied for it and been awarded. They've used it for different things, but I would say probably half of them have used them for needs assessments. So I, I can send you like the list of examples, but there, there's over, I would say, over sixty that I saw.
Okay.
So there, and they're very diverse. They've had depend on the community and the consultant, but we would do extensive research on that before we selected someone.
Well, there's two prongs to that question. One is, okay, I get the fact we're doing this because we want to fulfill part of our 2030 envision. The second part of it is, with any of these other communities, anything they've done actionable as a result of doing this analysis, and are, is there any data yet in terms of whether it was a waste of time to even do it, whether it was just nice to have some numbers, or whether it was something that was helpful in terms of addressing housing shortages or, or housing generally?
Do you want to take that, Michael?
So housing needs assessment are pretty routine for cities, not only in Colorado, but throughout the country. I, I may not have this hundred percent correct, but any entitlement communities, and that's generally any city over fifty thousand, that's receiving any community development block grant funds or other similar things are required to have a housing needs assessment. These, these happen all over the country every day. My, my former city up in the metro area did one of these. I was a part of that for a short time. And you, you live by it, so I mean, it, it's, it's kind of your blueprint. The needs assessment is the first step to understanding the problem, as we talked about so often. Then you put together a strategy to build on top of that. So these, you know, in some cases, they do just sit on shelves, but that's due to political well in cities that receive block grant funding. That's not us. We're not over fifty thousand, of course. They absolutely do act on it all the time. So there's, what comes out of it, this is, this is on our city website, on the planning department's page. This is the 2016 plan. Anybody can look at it. You'll see a number of recommendations on there. Some are easier to implement than others. Others take a lot of political will to do it, but this is the first step, identifying just, is there a need? I couldn't articulate exactly what our need is right now. But there's, there's a lot to come from this. It's not just section eight housing. That's far from the truth. That's a, it's a very common misperception, misconception. It, so this is, this is something that you, you, this is the, generally the first step you take toward any housing policy.
So is this used to determine like zoning, if we were going to zone property?
Say that some.
It's gonna be zoned for multifamily as opposed to?
And Karen can step in. There's, there's sometimes recommendations on how, how to make changes to your zoning code. It, I don't know if they, they go in and they recommend rezoning. I don't.
I don't know that they would. I want to use a phrase that I believe it was council member Neil used earlier this evening. The housing needs assessment helps identify the problem. What is the problem we're trying to solve? So as we all just got done discussing, housing has a lot of nuances and a lot of variability to it. So this really is that first step in identifying the problem, and then possible strategies that could be used to address said problem. And, and it is a list of recommendations, so it's a basis for actions we may want to take as a community. It's also a basis for other grant funds that may be available for aspects around addressing housing issues. So it, it is kind of one of those foundational documents that we would need to have in place for, for future actions around that. So is it a mandatory document? No. Does it provide guidance and potentially access to other funding? Yes. So I hope that answered your questions.
Counsel, anything further?
And, and so the, the endorsement from the council would just look like a letter noting as such with the mayor's signature, in case you're wondering.
Do you need a motion and a vote, or weren't you just like a consensus?
We have a motion.
I'll make a motion to endorse the DOLA planning grant program for housing needs assessment as presented. I'll second. Thank you. I'm having a little difficulty. I might have to take a roll vote, just if I could just have one second, please. Sorry.
Please pause.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Dad joke time?
Dad joke time. I like that. I move a dad joke while we're already in the motion.
Okay, we are ready, counsel.
Saved.
Yeah, we don't want a Jeff joke anymore. We. Yeah, that's what we discovered.
Thank you, counsel. Motion has passed six-one with councilmember Ott voting no. Thank you.
Very good. We're moving on to item six, public comment on items not on the agenda, and I don't have the sign-up list yet.
I have it here. I was trying to put the individuals into.
Sure, take your time.
They're in here, so the first person. Let's see. The first person that we have is, let me give you the sheet, is Kathleen, we can. I was gonna say. Whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening, all. I just want to say. I have a home. I love my home. I've lived here for nine years this month, and I love Woodland Park. I have since inherited a home in Colorado Springs, but I don't want to lose my home. I don't want to sell it. And I do not want to rent it out long-term. I've heard a lot of bad stories in that direction. And with short term, I believe that your house doesn't get abused. In fact, our, my neighbor told me, I'm glad you moved in. It used to be a rental, and I hated it. It was a long-term rental. So Robert, I would have to disagree with you when you brought up that example of New Orleans, because New Orleans is a party town. So we live in residential area. My house was zoned for a business. I had a daycare there for many years. And across the street is a flowering business. So I don't know if I'm zoned for a business, but I'd like to know what constitutes a commercial residence. And again, it's a lucrative business. The people on the panel that have this short-term rental are very business-minded. The income that I've heard that can be made is up in the eighty thousand, you know, a year, which is good business. You're bringing in good business for Woodland Park that spend money in the stores, pay taxes. I mean, this is good business. I tried to get an Airbnb in Glenwood this summer. I could not. They were booked. So I had to stay at a Glenwood Inn. That was expensive. We have three places, three choices to stay in Woodland Park as far as hotel accommodations. So I, I do ask that. There should be regulations, but I do agree that short-term rentals would not damage as much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Suzanne, I'll let you run that list.
Thank you. Next, we have Jerry Penland. I believe it was.
It's on the agenda.
Are you taking comment, ma'am, on items not on the agenda regarding STRs?
Yes, the moratorium is on the agenda, but short-term rentals in general are not.
Thanks, thanks for.
Thank you. When you're ready.
My name is Jerry Penland. I live on Masters Drive here in Woodland Park. On September the twenty-second, I discussed with our planning commissioners my extensive background dealing with conflicts of interest and how that relates to this STR ordinance. There is no current process for us citizens to engage with the city to assure there are no conflict of interest when the city is making decisions or should be making decisions on our behalf. All we have is the honor system with no citizen input allowed. Our city staff is paid for by us. All volunteers and elected city officials work for us. We should have a say in everything that goes on in this city, including helping shed light on what we see as definite or possible conflicts of interest. Let's say a city council member or one of their immediate family members who live anywhere in the world is or was on the pending list to get a short-term rental license. That is a conflict of interest. I respect the opinion of our attorney. I don't know what his background is for conflicts of interest. I worked with over fifty lawyers in my career. I don't believe any of them would have made that opinion, but I could be wrong. In my career, if I suspected, if I thought there was a conflict of interest, I would simply walk down the hall and bring it to the attention of the person responsible for doing the research and determining if a conflict of interest exists. On September the twenty-sixth, I asked the city staff in writing if we have such a person. Also asked, how do we citizens report what appears to us to be a conflict of interest? I have received no answer from the city staff. It was passed over to the lawyers, and that's where it sits, I guess, waiting for an answer. With no recousels to date that we citizens are aware of, there are other possible conflicts of interest with this STR action that should be investigated. For example, if someone or an immediate family member is connected to one of the current over a hundred and fifty active STR licenses, there is a conflict of interest. If someone is a realtor, investor, banker, or contractor telling clients or advertising something like our city, this house, or this location in our city is ideal for an STR, there's a conflict of interest. If the shoe fits, wear it proudly and recuse yourself when section three-fourteen demands it. Either force our honor system to work or replace it with something where we get our voice heard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jerry.
Next, we have Linda Martin.
I'm gonna be a Joe Biden, and I'm gonna read some of my stuff. And I won't be able to see that. Of course, and I would really be like Joe. Um, so I picked up the list of STRs yesterday from Suzanne. Thank you very much, Suzanne. Oh, by the name, by the way, my name is Linda Martin, Woodland Park. I picked up the list of STRs from Suzanne yesterday. Spent most of yesterday and again today going step by step through each address and comparing those addresses to the assessor database, which one would think in Teller County would be the most accurate database that this information should be built off of, but it is not. Couple things I found. Looks like the ambulance service, it's seven-eighty-five Red Feather, is an STR now. That's on our list of STRs. We have a couple of addresses in Divide on our list. We have Pete LaBarre's Peak View Park. Couple of units there. One would think that would be county. I think the first thing that needs to happen is this council and the staff as swamped as everyone is, and I know that, I acknowledge that, you need to learn how to gather data so that we are looking at apples to apples, not apples to ducks. So that would be number one. Number two, if you're planning on doing STRs, continuing to do STRs in residential areas, a couple of things I'd like to point out. And I lost the address now. I believe it's South Baldwin. You have the fancy townhomes that were just built. The majority of those are STRs, I noticed, on this list. How sad is that? Then you have the ugly greenish townhomes right across from the elementary school. And an STR. You don't know if you're allowing sexually violent predators into those units. You don't know if those people are coming in with fentanyl. They're right around the corner from schools. Are we gonna allow what gets this community to say no to allowing more STRs is the rape and murder of a child? Because we want to make money by selling houses to be STRs or by starting businesses that are STRs? What a sad way to learn the wrong way to do it. Um, we're also, you listen to Mr. Biden and to our governor, where they're talking more and more and more about electric cars and that one of these days, that's gonna have to be the way you go. If I have an STR next door to me, that STR in the ordinance that was haphazardly but honestly attempted by the planning commission, they're saying only a couple of people per bedroom. Let me tell you, that's not gonna happen. They're gonna have parties. They're gonna have gatherings. If I'm here for Christmas and I'm renting an STR, you're gonna tell me I'm not gonna invite my friends to join me for the holidays in my STR? Now, where are they gonna plug in all of those electric vehicles? We're compromising by not knowing how many people are living in a, in a residence. We're compromising the integrity of our own infrastructure. And who's gonna lose? Me. All of these people out here paying for those infrastructures. And I know everyone keeps preaching the Constitution, that everyone has a right to have a business in their home. Mayor LaBarre may have a pet sitting business. But let me tell you, her pet, pet sitting business is not parking fifteen cars out front. Not at all. If I have a tailoring business in my home, that's not parking fifteen cars out front. Somebody drops off their. Somebody drops off their skirt, I fix it, they pick it up. Done. You're compromising the integrity of our own infrastructure because you're not looking forward to what our own federal government is throwing at us right now. And we need to plan for that instead of reacting when it happens. And you're not doing that. My final word, and I'm shaking because I haven't eaten today. Um, I think this is very interesting. I believe it's the second or third paragraph of your ordinance. Whereas pursuant to CRS thirty-one fifteen four oh one, the city by and through the city council possesses the authority to adopt laws and ordinances within its police power and furtherance of the public health, safety, and welfare. What's an STR doing for me? How is that good for my health? How is that good for my safety? And how is that good for my welfare? Thank you.
Thank you.
So Mayor Labar, this is where I'm a little confused. On your list, and there's the stiners and you have. Yeah, so I didn't know, is it now or is it later? Okay, so, okay, that's okay. I didn't know when they wanted to go. That's all I have ma'am, and there is nobody on Zoom.
Okay. Right, so we're off to seven A. And that is our chief of police is presenting.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Honorable mayor, council. I'm here, as you know, to shed some light wherever I may on the agenda item that you have before you. I'm quite certain that you've already read the staff report, so I'm not gonna extrapolate the discussion unless you'd like me to, other than to say a summary. Okay. If you all would like a quick summary, you will know that this discussion started before I got here. However, during one of the meetings where the discussion was ongoing about the consolidation project, I was actually zooming in from two time zones away, so I was able to listen to that dialogue. And for the reasons that you have enumerated in the staff report before you, we were essentially tasked with recommending consolidation of the county communication centers or not. And the recommendation as we've put forward is to not consolidate the centers for the reasons that are in the staff report. The, like I said, you had before you, I don't know what else I might offer to the discussion unless you have specific questions I might be able to answer. I have relied heavily on our staff to help me prepare that report and they did an amazing job and I hope that you have found it as informational as I did. I'm here for you.
Council, questions?
So, so the short and long of it is we are not proceeding with consolidation, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And I know Cripple Creek was certainly opposed to it. I know some of our folks here in Woodland Park was, did it kind of? I don't, I didn't get what the, where the county was on that, because I know they were quite partial to it at one time. And then how was that?
I, I will tell you that as it relates to this facet of the discussion, the dialogue was pretty hot and heavy for the first maybe six weeks that I was here. And then it fell off the map. For reasons I don't know. But what I can tell you is, as it relates to me, this city and the services that we are providing currently, my responsibility is to bring that to you so that we can make educated decisions on how best to continue to serve the residents and all of us. Based upon that, I will recommend not going forward at this time.
Sure. Council member Neil.
Sir. Chris, we have had the opportunity to read what you had put in there and there was a very key piece of information that I'm gonna ask a question so you can actually get it in for anybody that hasn't gone out and pulled the packet down.
Sure.
When I, when we discussed this before, one of my big concerns was when you do consolidation, it goes kind of against a military principle and there's, you know, some military up here. But it has to do with, the military tries to push communication for command and control forward. In your assessment, because you, you highlighted it by consolidating, in your opinion, would be less responsive or more responsive if we were to consolidate?
If I understand the question, if we consolidate, you will lose a certain degree of operational control on how we do things. I can not only speak to that here, but I can speak to having participated in a consolidation in my old city. We were the last of seven cities in the county to do it, although the, the reasons and the needs are different than these. So I wanna make sure we understand. But having gone through that process and worked that from start to finish, I can tell you that you will always lose a bit of operational control over what we do and how we like to do it.
That was a key point that you put in there that I wanted people to hear so they would understand my, my upcoming vote.
Absolutely. And I'm not, I'm not going to, to try to make it look any other way. But I've watched the current system operate now in at least six critical incidents since I arrived here and it has worked flawlessly the way it is right now.
Thank you, Mayor.
There you go. I'd give you this one, but then I'll leave.
Anything further?
Yeah, make a motion, motion.
Make a motion regarding proposed phase three of the emergency nine eleven consolidation study.
What's your motion?
What is our motion? What is our recommendation? Recommend to not consolidate.
I'll second that motion.
If, if, if I'm a mayor, it, it's, the, the motion might be better stated not to proceed. It, it's the E nine one one authority that makes the decision on whether or not to proceed with phase three of the study. So I might suggest the motion be made. The council recommend to the El Paso Teller Authority not to proceed with phase three.
I will change my motion to not proceed with the
Phase three.
Phase three of the E nine eleven consolidation.
I will second your amended motion.
And we will do better on that next time.
Council may vote?
So it's the yes to not, correct, thank you. It's the hardest thing we've brought so far.
Listen, we're about in a thousand.
All this language for us.
I know.
It's a call.
If you don't want anything else from me, I'll move on and let you off.
You're welcome to move, yeah.
No, I believe you. Okay, the motion's passed seven zero and you will see the motion was to not proceed with phase three.
Very good. Thank you, thank you, Chief. All right, now I do have, so for the stiners, I have number eight, but eight is ordinance on initial posting and we have none. Okay, so probably nine B is what you're, okay, the moratorium, okay. Just wanted to. Okay, so now we're off to nine A, public hearings. We've got a approval ordinance number fourteen twenty-nine and we have our planning director as the presenter for that.
Good evening. The request in front of you this evening is from Mark, Mark two LLC, Mark McNabb, the developer. North Peak Properties LLC is the owner and the Park State Bank is the manager of the property. This relates to a piece of right of way known as Highlands Court and we wanna talk about the possibility of accepting that as a public road and transferring ownership of the tract of land in which this right of way lies, known as Track A, to the city of Woodland Park. So here is a map to get oriented as to where the site is located. You can see we've got our distinctive horseshoe with Highway twenty-four and it's here off to the eastern side of the property or eastern side of the city of Masters Drive. No, I'm sorry. Majestic Parkway, my apologies. So, and when we zoom in on the zoning map, you can see a little bit more information about the area is primarily suburban or residential. And this particular spot up in here where I've got that highlighted is where that site falls relative to Majestic Parkway and then spacious skies drive. An aerial of the property before it was developed shows an overlay of the proposed lots that have been created through the subdivision process and then tracked A is outlined in this turquoise color. So there's a cul-de-sac at the end and otherwise it connects down here to where there is a traffic circle at the intersection of spacious skies and majestic Parkway. This particular shot was also in your packet of the plat in its entirety that shows in more detail the layout of the nine lots in this particular filing and then track day, which is where the right of way was developed and that right of ways known as Highlands Court. So by way of history, this development has gone through a couple of different iterations. I understand it was originally proposed to be a twenty-one home cluster type layout development and it was gonna be governed with an HOA and there are a number of common elements associated with that. That project got shot down and so they then came back with this nine lot proposal and the concept of possibly having an HOA is they, at that time, we're still talking about Highlands Court being a private street. They have since changed their desire around that and are asking that the street now be made public and accepted by the city. So that's where the, the change is coming from. And the area is being developed with single family homes. Here is a photo that was taken out there where you can see in the picture here where the end of the traffic circle essentially falls and where the, the new street is up into Highlands Court. So we did talk to both the Director of Operations and the city engineer about this. They were comfortable with the city taking this street on and have determined that it has been constructed to meet city standard. So with that, the staff recommendation is to approve ordinance fourteen twenty-nine series twenty-two and ordinance accepting conveyance of Track A of the Highlands in Paradise, Woodland Park, Colorado, to the city of Woodland Park.
Council questions? Seeing none.
I'll make a motion.
Can I? Yeah. I don't have anyone signed up for this item. Do you have anyone with their hands up?
I do not, thank you.
Public comment.
Rusty's ghost.
Okay, so no comments? Then I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number one four two nine series twenty-two ordinance accepting conveyance of Track A of the Highlands in Paradise, Woodland Park, Colorado, to the city of Woodland Park.
I'll second.
Who got that one, Mayor?
We'll name it after you, Frank. We'll put a little plaque up. Like pull the pull on pull. The friend's court.
Thank you, council motion is.
I think this is attempted a dad joke.
You can't see it, but it's passed unanimously. Very good. All right, we're moving on to nine B and that's ordinance fourteen thirty and our city attorney is the presenter for that one.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We've already discussed the moratorium on application for submission acceptance processing and approval of applications for short term rentals. This council approved on July, effective July fifteenth and moratorium on those sorts of applications that expires October fifteenth of this year. This ordinance would extend the moratorium until December fifteenth permitting us time to consider the various ordinances that we discussed earlier, including the slimmed down version that you earlier asked us to draft.
Very good, council questions or comments? All right, now I do have somebody signed up for this one, so we're gonna go ahead and either Patricia or Mike, if you'd like to come up to the podium.
Good evening, Tricia Stinner, citizen of City Woodland Park. I am in opposition to extending the moratorium. I have questions about how this ninety day moratorium opened a very controlled dialogue between the city administration and the public. The dialogue, if it had been truly open, would have discussed the option of banning short term rentals or at least have caused the city to enforce our current zoning codes until new ones are agreed upon and written into our city's municipal code. I ask for counsel tonight to have this discussion. I asked this discussion with council because the planning commission apparently had predetermined STRs to be legal in all residential zoning districts. This predetermination has caused substantial loss of citizens' confidence in our elected and appointed city officials as well as our top salaried administrators. When the public loses confidence in municipal leadership, it opens the opportunity for change. Do the citizens of Woodland Park really need to be asserting a change in leadership tonight? Or do we merely need to re, do we merely need to witness current leadership perform their duties to uphold our city's municipal codes? There's another example of the city's lack of upholding our, our residential ordinances. It's the recent citizens' specific request to remove a now growing pile of refuse that is a major high fire hazard inside our city limits. The citizens' request for removal of this fire and safety hazard was received months ago, yet we've, we have seen no action being taken. Back to the STR moratorium. If council chooses to allow the moratorium to expire, would you please then direct city administration to take immediate actions to enforce our existing Woodland Park zoning codes and ordinances? If council votes to extend the STR moratorium, please consider amending title eighteen, section six, paragraph two eighty-eight to include short term rentals in the parenthetical definitions of commercial losses and ends because that's what they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, are you coming up? Okay. Isn't it nice when somebody articulate goes ahead of you and you say, yeah, what they said? Okay, council. I either need comments or a motion.
I make a motion to approve ordinance fourteen thirty, series twenty-two in ordinance of the city council for the city of Woodland Park, Colorado, extending a temporary moratorium on the submission acceptance processing and approval of application for all short term rental licenses as presented.
And I'll second it.
May vote, council?
You're not allowed to do that.
You can't see it, but we have five council members voting in favor of it. One voting, council member case voting against it. And council member Neil has abstained from the vote, which we.
Okay, then send it over, I'll vote again.
You want to solve it again?
Yeah. We can redo it. It's reset. Thank you. Is anyone voting?
I did. It's off my screen. Did you not get it?
Three, third times a charm.
I'll just tell you who's missing.
I haven't, she doesn't have anyone.
No one.
You don't have anyone?
Yeah.
We all got it.
You have technical difficulties.
I'm having, yes, I'm definitely having difficulties tonight. I don't know what they are.
You are forgiven.
So, yes.
You want to just do a verbal vote?
Sure.
Okay.
If, if that's okay with you, Mayor.
Absolutely.
Okay, Zuluaga?
Yes.
Yes.
Case, no.
Yes.
Nikai?
Yes. Neil?
No. Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Um, let's see here, five to two. With Case and Neil voting no, thank you very much.
Very good. All right. Off to ten, new business, none. After reports. I just have a couple of dates to announce if I can find them. All right, we have the state of the county breakfast, which is hosted by the Chamber of Commerce and that is Monday, October seventeenth at seven thirty AM to nine AM at the past cultural center. And I think that Commissioner Williams will be presenting. And then we have Kiwanis Wicked Halloween Bingo. Wednesday, it's wicked. Wicked fun. Wednesday, October nineteenth, six thirty PM to nine PM at the past cultural center. And that's all I have for the evening. Counselmember Case?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Counselmember Connors?
I do. I have a picture. Can you put that picture up for me, please, Sarah? Oh, thank you. Can you make it really big? Can you make it bigger now? Make them people like real sized people. No, it's okay. It's all good. Thank you.
Frankly. Yeah, just keep zooming right in.
It is, Sarah, it's not broadcasting.
I'm guessing it's a kid you want to accent in this picture.
Yeah.
It is broadcasting now.
Okay, thank you. I was honored to attend a silver medal award to this young man right in the middle here. He's a hundred and seven years old. First Sergeant Harold Nelson. We gave him a city pin and thanked him for his service, but it was a pretty awesome ceremony. That was a poor story and that's all I have. Thank you. That was a silver star. Silver star for his actions in World War Two. He has two Purple Hearts, Bronze Star, and this was the end that was, he was due after he machine gunned a lot of people. Pretty awesome story, but thank him for his services. Pretty awesome.
Counselmember Nikai?
I have nothing.
Counselmember Neil?
I do have a downtown development authority report. The meeting was held on October fourth at seven thirty here in the council chambers. There are two things of note. There was a class on conflict of interest. It was training presented by Marcus McCaskin, the DDA attorney. And the second thing of interest was the Tava House team did discuss their project, but not in great detail because there's confidential information that they do not want in the public domain yet. But I was informed by Tony Perry, when I met with him the following day, that the team did meet with John Kamelke and Tony Perry and they have seen the draft development and disposition agreement sitting on a table. They, when I say they saw it, they have not had an opportunity to read it, but that hard copy document is going to be electronically transferred to the DDA board members and the DDA attorney as we start going through the terms and conditions and negotiate the final document for ratification. That concludes my report.
Very good. Counselmember.
Excellent. All right, for the historical preservation committee, just have a couple of things here. Really one thing with two parts here. So there's a potato soup supper that's hosted by the U Pass Historical Society and they're going to do, been doing this for fifteen years, by the way, in case you didn't know. And they're going to have a dude ranch, the BBB dude ranch documentary. So this is October seventh, cost of fifteen dollars and this is to help raise funds. You can also, if you do go or don't go, you could still donate to the U Pass Historical Society. They do a pretty good job there of documenting our history. It's pretty incredible. And they also have DVDs and books and things like that, that you can, you can check out our, our, our area and our history here. So the doors up will open at five fifteen and it'll be in the divide community building. So now at three thirty, they have the nomadic photo archives. They're coming in and, you know, for folks that have been here for a really long time, you know, tell your story or maybe you haven't been here a really long time. I don't know. But go tell your story, get a photo. There is a number to call for reservation to do that and your story will, your video story will be archived and our photo story will be archived in the U Pass Historical Archives. That phone number, in case you're interested, is six four six, six four two, three, four, five, six. And the next meeting for the HPC Commission is going to be on November seventh at three thirty here at City Hall. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Counselmember Zuluaga?
Yes, keep Woodland Park beautiful. Meets next Thursday at five o'clock. The change in, change in time with a hope to get enough of a quorum to actually have a vote. So it was conflicting with a couple of things, so we'll see if it's any better. So come along if you're interested in keeping Woodland Park beautiful. It's upstairs in the, in the meeting room and Grace, are they serving pizza?
You gotta have a draw card.
City attorney.
I have no report. I will try and redeem myself with a truly disappointing joke at the next meeting.
He's stealing your thunder, Michael.
That's the joke.
You think she can deliver it better?
You just quickly before I go to Michael, I do want to mention Kelly and I did get the chance to meet with Senator Hickenlooper and we did do the tour of the Habitat for Humanity houses that they're building off of sixty-seven and those houses are phenomenal and they're beautiful inside. So kudos to Habitat for Humanity. They're doing an excellent job and working very hard at trying to house people who can qualify for them.
I'm going to add to that, Mayor, because they still have a number of units that they do not have folks for. So if any of you know anyone that would be interested or would like to see if they couldn't qualify and get involved with get becoming a Habitat for Humanity homeowner, there's opportunity there. So.
Kelly, do you know what those requirements are?
What?
Do you know what those requirements are?
No, they're really very complex and I would contact the Teller Habitat for Humanity. Zonia Rodaba, she's a real estate agent here in town. It's their exec, their board chair. And Keith Meyer is going out as their executive director. I don't remember the gal's name that is taking his place.
Sarah Bestel.
Someone knows more than I do in the audience. Imagine that. Just kidding. I really don't know much, but.
And Debbie Miller, also Chamber of Commerce, can get you in contact with those who would need. She, she knows exactly who to call and how to get ahold of them.
Debbie knows everything. That's.
Debbie does know a lot.
Mayor, I heard that you or Councilmember Case asked a probing question of Senator Hickenlooper.
That would have been me.
Was you? Did he give you? And I thought I heard it was something to the effect of why are you increasing such regulations to make houses so much more expensive? Did he give you an answer?
Climate control. And by the way, she did a fine job. But he did agree that there should be less regulations and less red tape and less bureaucracy, but then it went back to climate control. So, yeah.
That he voted for.
Yeah, what he voted for, right.
But, but you know, although we have difference, different politics, I'll just say it, than Mr. Hickenlooper. I did glean a lot of useful information from the conversation with regards to some conversations going on in Washington and some actual bipartisan work that's happening that we don't hear about in the press because it's not sensational and it's not press worthy because it's good stuff.
And he, they, he is working with our commissioners with the forest and over population and fire and trash and he's aware of it and working with other Colorado senators and also on the issue of water. So, and he was very polite and very personable and I happen to know him from many months ago. And he remembered that because I had the competitive, the competing restaurant to his wine coop brewery and he she was a big hit. Didn't like me back then. Took a lot of business from him. So anyhow, Michael.
Just one thing, Mayor. We had a tourism workshop following up on a number of public interactions with stakeholders in the tourism, retail, hospitality community that was on Tuesday, punctuated by the meeting with Senator Hickenlooper. That went very well. I think we had about fifteen, fifteen, twenty folks that went attended. That was a workshop facilitated by the Colorado Tourism Office, went very well. Councilmember Zuluaga was there. There was, I think it went so well that there was generally consensus among everyone there that we were moving in the right direction. Is that the fair assessment? There were people I never thought could ever see eye to eye on things and they indeed did and they
Very good.
They noted it. So it's, it is encouraging. So that was good. We'll continue with the process of belling out a strategic plan for tourism. We'll keep you posted.
Very good.
That's all I got.
All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.